Hello and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, September 14th, 2022. Present this evening, we have Steve Wiatrowa, Vice Chairman, Thomas Chanacki, Clerk of the Board, Richard Clark, Member, David Durgan, Member, myself, Guy Horn, Chairman, and William Scanlon as our Acting Town Planner. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
If I remember, I don't think I've done that since grade school.
Yeah, me neither.
Next item on our agenda this evening, approval of minutes from August 8th meeting, 2022.
I'm not quite sure where this is, but it looks like the minutes that I'm seeing here were for August 10th.
Yes, I just saw that also.
I don't remember which date is correct.
One of the two, hopefully. What do we got for a calendar here?
It's probably my fault. Probably it's the 10th, let me check.
August 10th, it looks like it would have been. Is that right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
My mistake.
So we can't approve August 8th, and we don't have August 10th on the agenda.
We can approve it.
We can approve August 10th?
Excuse me, there's error.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for August 10th.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have two originals to sign.
Okay.
I'll start with it.
I got it, Mr. Chairman.
My votes are circulating. Next item on our agenda, any plans we have done for this evening, and the next item on the agenda, agenda item, sorry, discussion of zoning amendments for the October town meeting.
So town meeting is coming up on October 24th, I believe.
Twenty, is it? It was the 28th. We have a meeting on the 26th.
It is the 24th. Let me make the 24th at seven o'clock. So I know of one amendment which is coming our way, and that is the request to change the hours of operation for a retail marijuana store. The zoning bylaw currently regulates hours from closing time of 8:00 p.m., and the owners of the Greatest Hits Marijuana Store have asked the selectmen whether that could be extended to 10:00 p.m., and I believe the selectmen supported that article, and I'm assuming that they have initiated that request to the planning board, although I don't have that in writing yet. But I think we could assume that the planning board would be, excuse me, the board of selectmen would be the sponsor of that article. So that would be one amendment that would come to the planning board.
So they would sponsor it, but we would have to, we would have to make a report on it?
Yes. It's the duty of the planning board to hold a public hearing on all proposed zoning amendments and to make a recommendation to town meeting for approval or not approval of an article. So in terms of the public hearing dates, the only regular meeting that we could hold, that hearing, would be on October 12th, which is the first meeting in October. I will need to get the add-in to the Webster Times this week in order to be published on the 22nd and the 29th, excuse me, on the 29th, no, that's right, the 22nd and the 29th, to make the 14-day public hearing notice requirement. If you wanted to pick another meeting night, you could, of course, or you could do it on the next Wednesday, which is the 19th. But I think we could do it on the 12th, if, might as well do it on a regular meeting night unless you had other...
Well, the next, the next meeting would be the 26th, no, not the 19th.
We don't have enough time to get the notice in the paper for that meeting. So the only regular meeting then would be the 8, would be the 12th, excuse me, of October.
That's fine with me. Anybody else?
I think that works for me, 12th of October.
Yeah, that's fine. Would that be the only thing on our...
Well, there's three other possibilities.
Okay.
The residents of Fish Road had requested that their lots be rezoned from industrial 130 to a residential category, and we postponed that from the annual town meeting, and I think we could take it up at the fall town meeting. Planning board would be the sponsor of that article, so you'd have to decide that you wanted to move forward on that, on that request.
If memory serves me, didn't we postpone that upon the residents' request?
It was upon the request of the selectmen.
Oh.
The town owns two parcels in that area.
Okay.
Were acquired through tax title. But the town hasn't really decided to do anything with those parcels at this point in time, so I think we're comfortable moving forward with the zoning change for the other properties. There are, I think, five single-family homes. There's one vacant private lot and the two town-owned lots, so there are eight lots altogether.
And these lots would be rezoned to residential, but we don't know exactly what zone we'd put them in, or?
I think we were thinking 87.
They're that big.
But I think we might need to go to 43, just to make sure that they would all, you know, be conforming.
Because we don't want to make anybody's lot non-conforming.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Bill, so the selectmen had wanted us to put this off, and we have clear indication from them that they are agreeable to going forward with it at this time?
Well, I talked to the town administrator about it, and he didn't think there was any reason to postpone it any longer. So I don't have a clear indication from the selectmen, but...
Would we, would we notify all the butters, or all the people that...
I think we should, sure.
So the thinking comes to the public hearing and let us know that they're okay with this? Because, I mean, it would be kind of hard to be rezoning somebody's land if they don't really want it to happen.
Right. They were supportive of it, I think. It was basically their request.
Okay, so we've got the zoning for the marijuana bylaw, we've got the Fish Road rezoning of the lots, eight lots. What else?
There are two other changes we haven't talked about yet, and these were ideas from Richard, and I provided some handouts in your packet tonight.
Okay.
The two are to add a provision to allow or require or regulate electric vehicle charging stations, and the other one is to adopt common driveway or shared driveway regulations. I've provided some examples of each of those kinds of bylaws for you to think about. The first handout on the electric vehicle charging station is from Framingham, which allows electric vehicle charging stations to be incorporated into a project, but it doesn't require them, it just makes it a permitted use. The second article is, the second bylaw is from the town of Danvers, which actually has a requirement that each parking lot containing over 75 spaces, at least two spaces within the 10 spaces closest to the primary entrance to the building must be reserved for electric vehicles. So they have a requirement of two, if you hit a minimum of 75 spaces.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, if I may, Bill, it says reserved for electric vehicles, but it doesn't say that they're electric charging stations necessarily, so it's kind of vague.
Yeah, it could be, could be clearer, I think, but I think that's the intent. The third one is from Auburn, which I found kind of odd, is that they have a special permit requirement, which really just is an obstacle or a hurdle for someone to overcome if they wanted to put in a charging station. So I'm not really in favor of a special permit requirement, but if you are, we could, we could consider that. And then the last one is from the town of, or city of Methuen, which has a three-page bylaw on charging stations. They have a page of definitions of what all the various terms and types of facilities are, and then on that second page, they allow sort of low-level, medium-level charging stations to be allowed in single-family or multifamily zones, and then the fast-charging stations, which they call Level 3, can be installed in commercial, industrial, or municipal locations, or in a vehicle service station. They also have a category of battery exchange stations where someone can go in and change their electric battery for a new battery, so that's a kind, that's a use that they are regulating as well. For the electric vehicle charging station requirements, they can be allowed in, Level 1 and 2, the slower, medium, can be allowed in a residential district, either new construction or retrofitting. And then the Level 3 stations can be in new commercial or industrial construction or retrofitting in a commercial site. And then they, at the bottom of the page, item number four, design criteria, specifies the different conditions that must be adhered to in order to gain approval for an electric vehicle charging station. So they've taken pains to, to regulate these carefully, and we could certainly look at their requirements and see whether that makes sense. For the number of stations, no minimum number of vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations is required, however, no more than 10% of the total number may be designated. And then as an incentive, they say that an electric vehicle charging space may count for one half of a space. So that's an incentive, I think, if you're tight on parking, you can get two for one, which might help your parking count. And then they go into other different kinds of standards as well. So if you wanted to pursue a bylaw that regulates this, we could look at, you know, decide which of these sort of models make sense to you, and I could put together an article, so to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the planner for having provided a number of examples. I had one, which was, I think, a potential one that has not yet been approved by Watertown. I think we're all aware that the push is on in terms of electric vehicles, like, was it the state of California, after the year 2035, I believe it is, it won't be selling any internal, no longer will you be able to sell internal combustion, so it'll be electric or nothing. Somewhere along the way, I believe many folks have it in mind that folks will be plugging in in their garages, which may well be the case, but having multi-residence facilities such as an apartment building, for example, likelihood is that the individual renters will not have access to separate or individual garages, so that possibility is certainly limited. We have few, and the town of Dudley, as I understand it now, I have like four in front of the library and in front of Marty's Jeep Boos, another three or four more. Does anyone know? A chance, not that many.
Two, I believe.
Two, okay. At some point, I'm thinking in terms of Stevens, Lennon Mill development, if you will, that's probably going to be in excess of 200 vehicles, those folks at some point in time will be looking to plug into something, and I don't believe we have any clear indication that there's going to be charging stations available there. So if we don't kind of get ahead of this thing, if you will, they're going to put people out there with some very long extension cords, we're just not going anywhere.
Bill, where would you see it going into the zoning bylaw? Would we put it in, like, site plan review, or?
In the parking section.
Put it in the parking section, okay.
And I do like the idea of having kind of a minimum, you know, if it's 25 units in an apartment complex, I don't think it's unreasonable to require at least five.
Yeah, but who pays for it? Is it like a credit card? Have your...
Who's paying for gas now?
Well, you are, but if you're plugging in.
Right, well, you're going to pay for it, yeah.
They have a card swipe, just like...
They have a card swipe? Because I've seen it in garages all the time.
Well, in a garage, you're paid for three...
It's not free electricity.
National credit is getting, getting their pound of flesh, they're not going to miss that opportunity.
Yeah.
McDonald's in Oxford has, I think, two.
Yes, you're right, they do. And that, probably a convenience for the people coming off of 395, who'll probably exhaust whatever battery they had by the time they get to that big mac outlet.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, my thoughts are, looking at the Methuen one, I think that's not for us. I think it's way too verbose. I think we should wade into these waters as far as this goes, you know, start with something simple. We can always add, amend, or add things as the years go by and we determine that we need them. I mean, there's just some crazy stuff in here as far as, I mean, if we were a much larger town or city, I can see where this would be more important, but some of this stuff just, just having to catch one of these things, it says that they actually don't want you to put the electric vehicle parking spaces in, in the best locations because they're worried about people would park their regular cars there, and then the people with electric cars couldn't park there. But I mean, it's just, there's just a lot to digest. This is, so my vote would be, the Methuen regulations are not appropriate for us. And then looking at Auburn, I would agree with the town planners' assessment that I don't think we want to make a special permit required, you know, that they've got to go through a special permit process to get them. I think if we want to encourage people, businesses to put them in, we probably don't want that. That leaves, let's see, Danvers, what they're talking about, parking lots or structures containing 75 parking spaces or more, we're not going to have a lot of that here in Dudley, so...
I was thinking, like, on the line of what Mr. Clark was saying, I think, like, if we went, like, say, like, if you had, if you're building something or renovating something and you had 20 parking spots, that you have to have a minimum of one charging station, and if you get, if you jump up to 35 parking spots, you have to have a minimum of two, you know, and probably have a little threshold like that.
Yeah, so either something like the Danvers one, but with lower numbers, or the Framingham one, which basically says, we're, we're saying, we're feasible, we're going to allow it, but we're not going to require it.
I'm really surprised that they renovated all the parking lot at Parking Shop, and they didn't put one in there.
That's true.
And that was another question I had for you, was, when you're renovating the parking lot, wouldn't that require a site plan review?
I believe there is a parking threshold for site plan review in the bylaw. I didn't know they were renovating it.
It's all done. Looks good.
Yeah, it's a tremendous improvement over what it was. They did, they did seal a good deal of it, and actually...
They sealed a lot.
Parts of it were actually replaced. I assume they had to go through some permitting process in terms of...
No, I never pulled a permit to do a driveway or a parking lot.
Don't confess anything now. But did they change the flow of traffic through the parking lot, or is it just a repaving?
It was just a repave.
I think, I think anytime you demolish and repave it, people will come back for a site plan.
See, I thought it was that, like, if they added traffic islands and things like that, which is, by the way, I don't know why they didn't do that when they were doing all this other work, because I thought I remembered the owner of that new restaurant talking about this.
Right, yeah, Whiskey Rock, so there was some thought that there was something like that.
The bylaw says a major site plan review is required for the construction or renovation of parking facilities involving 10 or more spaces.
Oh, renovation.
So repaving is considered renovation, right?
I would think, yeah.
Oh, I guess somebody didn't do what they were supposed to do. What a shock.
You've got to find a way to go. Well, all of that said, it does look good. It looks a lot better. I think there's one example there that I had found, again, the Watertown thing. Development's requiring more than 100 parking spaces, again, much more than Dudley. Two electric vehicle charging stations shall be provided with one, an additional one charging station per 50 additional parking spaces, up to a maximum of five charging stations. That's, again, way over the numbers we'd likely see in Dudley, but I do like the thought in terms of, like, 25 and five or something along those lines.
Well, you know, if you read the rest of the Danvers one, though, it actually, it goes on to say that, you know, if it's 75 spaces or over, they have to have, but then it says that the two spaces should be within the 10 spaces closest to the primary entrance. So you could actually extrapolate that and say, you know, if you're, if you're building or renovating a parking lot, well, 10 might be a little low, like 15 or 20 spaces, maybe, if you're, if you're...
I was thinking, if you're going to build or renovate a parking lot, 20 spaces, you put one in, at least one. Like 30 or 35 spots, you put two in, and then after...
Maybe one station per every 20 parking spaces, something like that.
That would work.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable. I mean, at my, at my company, we have, I think we have around 400 parking places total, and we have 10, 10 charging stations, and they're going to put another 10 in.
I've worked out the same number then.
Now, what are those leased out?
No, they're free. If you work there and you have an electric car, you can charge for free.
Yeah, but who?
You pay for it, Tom.
Yeah, but for the equipment and everything, is that a lease on contract?
No, the equipment, the equipment is attached to the building. It's company-owned. And the electricity that the company buys is all from a solar farm in Charlton. We buy all of our, we've got solar credits from the solar farm in Charlton.
Mr. Chair, Bill, do you think you could craft something that would pass muster on something like that?
Sure, yeah.
There's one other thing that we...
Keep it simple. You have to have a lower threshold, because like, like, these guys are saying, we're not going to have these huge parking lots. I mean, we might have one or 200-car parking lots, but it's going to be, they're already approved. It's the Parking Shop and the, and the mill. Other than that, we won't see it.
One other thing that I think, Mr. Chairman, may come up at some point is the storage in terms of the batteries. As these batteries degrade, if you will, and have to be replaced, at some point, they're going to pile up somewhere. I don't know whether that's at a reclamation center, obviously not the transfer center, transfer station in town, or junkyards or someplace.
Yeah, there's not going to be anybody taking them out of their cars to get a new battery and not swapping the old battery in, because the old battery has still value.
Well, from what I understand, the cost of replacing, just taking a battery out and putting a new one in, it's prohibitive. You're almost better off buying a new vehicle. It's like 20, I think we're Chevy Bolt or Bolt, it's like $20,000 for the battery.
$16,000.
So you might as well, you know, junk the car, start all over again.
I think these battery regulations are more crafted to just try and not have a situation where you have any repair shop stockpiling these batteries.
Right. Because there are, you know, these, what are they, rare earth metals or minerals that go into these things. I don't think, I mean, I think we were all somewhat surprised in terms of what PFOS was and the necessity to be aware of and remediate that situation. I don't know what could be coming out of these things over a period of time that we're not aware of today, but will be in 10 or 15 years.
I think it's more for, like, car dealerships that are taking them out, you know what I mean?
And then the proper disposal and storage of these things.
Storage of them and making sure they're not going to explode in that building, or, you know what I mean? I understand.
I would think that maybe at some point in the future, we don't necessarily need to do something with that this time around if we get the parking.
Yeah, oh, definitely. I see what you're saying, down the road. Down the road will become, when the electric vehicles are so prevalent that we have a number of electric vehicles, if there are drops opening up, then we can attack that then.
Everybody will have the same bylaw.
Well, hopefully, hopefully.
Probably crafted by the state.
Something by the state, hopefully by the state.
That makes more sense.
That would make some sense, that hopefully they will do that.
They would at least determine the minimum guidelines, I would think. You can make them more strict, but you can't go below their threshold.
The other change that Richard suggested was to develop regulations for shared or common driveways. So the first page of the handout is what Dudley currently specifies, and that is that one driveway can be used for two houses. Only by a special permit from the Board of Appeals can more than two houses use the same driveway. So I looked, provided some examples from a couple of other towns as to how they deal with the common driveway requirement. And the thought is that these would, could either require a special permit and/or specify certain design and construction standards so that there's, you know, a common construction method that would last over time. So the first one is from Easton, which says, common driveway is providing access to not more than three lots, maybe allowed by special permit, by the Planning and Zoning Board. And they have various design standards. One, the distance of the common driveway measured from the street line to the point where any principal building is proposed should not exceed a distance of 500 feet. Common driveway should be located entirely within the boundaries of the lots to which the driveway provides access. The centerline intersection of the common driveway with the street's centerline should not be less than 45 degrees. A minimum width of 18 feet and the minimum travel wave of 12 feet should be maintained. The roadway surfaced with a minimum of four inches of grated gravel placed over a properly-prepared base, graded and compacted to drain from the crown, shall be installed. So they don't require these to be paved. Six, the grade of the common driveway that intersects on the public way shall not exceed 8% for a distance of 20 feet from the travel surface of the public way. Nine, the common driveway shall not disrupt existing drainage patterns. Ten, documents shall be submitted to the planning board demonstrating that through easements, covenants, or other legal devices, the maintenance, including snow removal, repair, and liability, shall remain the responsibility of the private parties. And then you can't use a common driveway to satisfy frontage requirements. So that's, you know, fairly simple, but I think comprehensive.
I don't like it. So you're telling me if I take my driveway and I have enough land in the back, I can just use my driveway for another driveway?
No, actually, Mr. Chairman, to Tom's point, we still have a frontage requirement. So for instance, if you take, like, Res 15, which is like the only place left in Dudley where you might find some lots that are developable, your minimum lot, frontage requirement is 100 feet. So that means if you wanted to do three lots, you still have to have the 300 feet of frontage on the public way.
Yeah.
So what is the point of a common driveway? If you've got 300 feet of frontage, why are you just putting one common driveway in to serve three lots and go through all the rigmarole of having all the deeds written so that there's, after the grades, he's mentioned two of the lots?
You minimize the number of curb cuts, so rather than three curb cuts, you only have one on the street, so that makes the road safer.
Okay.
There may be topographic constraints where, you know, the frontage isn't practical, so you put a common driveway in to get to the buildable portion of the lot that's away from the actual frontage of the road. So there could be situations where it makes sense to do that.
And you could have frontage on, you could have frontage on two roads, and one, one of them's not accessible, and the other one's very small, but you could have enough room to put a driveway in.
Okay, all right. Because the only example I can think of is on Mason Road. I know that it was wetlands up in the front, so couldn't really put the driveway through there, so they used a common driveway there. So that's, that's...
Dudley Hill Road, heading over to the Four Corners by Nichols, there's, there was two lots there, and I don't know if it's going to be a common driveway or not. It kind of looks like it's going to be, though. There's, there's a new house that's built way in the back on the left-hand side.
Okay.
And there's going to be another house up in the front.
I saw that.
And it's going to have a side-entry garage, so my thought is, they're going to probably go in the same driveway and just turn into that side-entry garage.
Now, I could have sworn I remembered that A and R coming before us.
Yeah, I thought there were three residents going in there, three, three houses.
It looks like there's only room for two.
I know. I can't remember if they discussed a common driveway.
I confess, my memory's probably faulty on that. I thought there were three.
It's a permissible use.
So if you have the land and you have the frontage, you can put two driveways in, two houses?
Why wouldn't you? No, if you have the land and you have the frontage, this says you could put in...
One driveway.
One driveway.
One driveway for two houses?
For two houses.
Or three, if we change it.
Or four, if you have the land in the back.
Dudley says more than two by special permit, so with no, no upper limit.
Oh, there you go.
So if you go up, what is it, Dave's Way 2, off of, what is it, 197?
Yeah.
You go up Dave's Way, there's a driveway on, it's a boulevard entrance, but when you go up and turn around and come back down the boulevard heading out, on that right-hand side, there's a driveway that goes in. Those three houses that face 197, they, they weren't allowed to have driveways coming out of 197 because it's too dangerous. Similar situation to what you're talking about across the street, though. So those three houses are all served by a single, a common driveway with a turnaround at the end, and that was, that was approved.
The more, the more I think about it now, I think of another example. The end of Flaxfield Road, same thing. There is a common driveway serving two houses at the end of Flaxfield Road, and the frontage for those two lots is actually on Sawmill Road. And you've got a huge wetlands crossing and a stream there that would negate being able to come in off of Sawmill Road, so that's why they did that. All right, so I, I don't have an opposition to it.
All right, so I, I don't have an opposition to it. Do we, so what are we basically talking about? That we wanna increase it from a two-lot minimum to a three-lot? Three houses on one lot? Well, you know, it's open for discussion. Currently allow two by right, so we could make it a special permit for, for any common driveway, or leave it the way it is, as two by right and more than two by special permit.
Well, you know, on the state level is a push for this kind of zoning changes because of the fact that there's a housing shortage. And so what they're trying to encourage is, or trying to encourage developers or builders to, us to try and use lots that they previously weren't able to use.
I, I think, um-
And the, the other category would be to add various standards for construction.
That's what I was gonna say. I, I don't have a problem with what we got right now, two houses, and then like, if, if, if somebody wanted to propose three or four, they have a particular situation, they could come before us, and then we could, you know, refer them to the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals. But I think we should have some, I think we should have some regulations for the common driveway, 'cause like our regular driveway says it should be no less than ten feet wide. And I mean, if you've got a common driveway and you're sharing it with another party, I mean, you can't pass two cars on a ten-foot wide driveway. I like the other one that said that it was, had to be cleared at eighteen feet wide and a minimum of twelve foot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as, as the thoroughfare. I mean, I think that would be, you know, we could put something like that in our-
Mm-hmm.
Some verbiage in there.
Mm-hmm.
Well, to that point, you know, people are living on deliveries from Amazon, Federal Express, UPS constantly. That ten feet doesn't give you a whole lot to get around.
Right.
You got one of those things.
So I'm thinking maybe we should have something in there where maybe even twelve feet isn't enough. Maybe like, I like the eighteen-foot cleared, but maybe we say fourteen-foot travel.
The town of Easton says twenty feet.
Twenty-foot travel?
Greenfield is twenty feet.
Access not being provided by an approximately land, oh, not, talking about the landscape buffer area, at least twenty feet.
I got twelve feet in town of-
Oh, yeah, I see that. Number four.
Twelve.
And, uh, Danvers I have here is sixteen feet, so.
I mean, I think a travel lane on a highway is like ten feet wide. I don't think you need that much, 'cause you're not gonna have like two trailer trucks passing.
Usually like, you know, twelve feet would be an interstate, probably, and eleven feet might be a, like a arterial, and maybe ten feet might be a local street, but-
Okay.
So Easton says a minimum cleared width of eighteen feet and a minimum travel way of twelve feet, so if they want-
So there you need tune-outs then, if you're gonna have two cars coming in opposite direction, you need as a pull-over space.
If you went like eighteen-foot cleared and say like fourteen-foot travel.
Yeah.
I think you could, two cars could pass on fourteen feet.
Yeah, if you had a shoulder that you could pull off onto.
Yeah.
And all of these common driveways are gonna split at the end anyways.
Right.
It's not gonna be a common driveway going up to one of the houses that the guy's gonna park there.
Until they hit the other lot.
Right, exactly.
Where it becomes a single driveway.
Yeah, I think if we put something in there that just gave a little bit more definition.
Yeah, well, the Easton thing, it says, you know, the fire chief may determine if established a general fire lane about less than twelve feet in width extending around, on which further the building is deemed necessary, so. So they put perhaps some of the fire chiefs. Well, it sounds like, I'm making a leap of faith here, that we have some thought in terms of putting some dimensional requirements in here that we don't currently have.
Mm-hmm.
And I did like the length, um, I think one of them I saw five hundred feet. I think that's a little excessive. Maybe, maybe we put a, a maximum length of like three fifty or something like that.
Greenfield, maximum length of five hundred feet.
'Cause I think, what's the maximum that you can have for a cul-de-sac? That's six hundred feet, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So I would say three or three fifty for a driveway should be plenty.
Okay, for the common portion of the driveway?
Right. And I mean, with, you, you can always put a caveat at the end, too, that, that could be, um, you know, these, these criteria or conditions could be, could be, um, modified by a vote of the planning board or the, or the zoning board of appeals.
Well, the ZBA is the special permit granting authority for this.
So under the Danvers, uh-
If you were, if, let's say you're only doing a two, eh, two units on one common driveway, you wouldn't have to go to the ZBA.
Correct.
But somebody may wanna change, might, might, have a minor modification to say the width or the length or something.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could, that could be a vote, vote of the planning board.
Allow waivers of-
Yeah, a vote of the planning board versus having to go to the ZBA.
So, Mr. Chairman, under the Danvers regulations, under Part Four Design Standards, says the driveway shall not exceed, exceed more than three hundred feet in length from the street line.
Okay.
All driveways shall be a minimum of sixteen feet in width to the point where the shared driveway splits into the individual driveway, so that's exactly what we were just talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's reasonable.
Driveways shall have a maximum grade of ten percent. That's also reasonable.
We have, we should have a grade.
What are you looking at, Steve?
Uh, that's, uh, this is Danvers.
Danvers.
Under number four, Design Standards.
Okay.
Steve, we already have a grade, um, we have a grade that shall not exceed six percent, sending from the curb through the first fifty feet.
We all know that's followed to a T, right?
Yeah, well, but, once in a while. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm gonna steal from Greenfield a bit. "No parking areas or structures shall be allowed in the driveway right of way." Well, you know-
Someone would do that, would you?
Well, yeah, it's a possibility. Uh, I think if you don't say you can't, somebody's gonna assume they can. Uh, and I'm just thinking, if somebody's got one heck of a, you know, Labor Day barbecue, and they got all that thing, you know, all the neighbors and friends have come over there, and that driveway is jam-packed, and a guy in the end is gonna take a kid to the hospital, uh, could get a little dicey. I think that you'll find that down at Claremont, uh, the town planner there has described shared driveways as poison. And I think that might be where that comes from, or something like that.
Okay. I don't know. I've seen a lot of situations where people will put up a, a little wooden overhang at the, you know, at, at the roadside for the bus stop, for the kids. To stay out of the rain, so your regulation that you just proposed would basically not allow that.
Uh, at the end of the driveway, in terms of where you're coming onto the public way, I wouldn't have any problem with that.
But you just said-
It says it's not allowed in the right of way.
Okay, in the right of way, but, well-
Well, the right of way is the, is the, is the area that is, we're talking about, I don't know.
If it's off the, if it's off the road, I don't think it's a problem, Steve.
Give the kids an umbrella.
Oh, you know, I'm thinking private road.
Yeah.
So, right. Technically, that wouldn't be in the right of way. That would be one of the, the actual property that the common driveway is going across is actually part of one of the lots, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
It takes a while to get your head around this stuff.
Yeah.
Have to read it a couple of times.
And I don't think we're necessarily gonna cover everything at this meeting, and maybe even in future. It'll, it may take a while for us to work through this as more of these come into, to being, or potentially show up for consideration.
Well, you know, that's a good point. We don't have to do this at the fall. We could, you know-
Carry it over to the spring?
Study this and do it in the spring, if that's your-
There's no pressing need right now. I would, I would urge us to make some effort in regards to ED, so.
My, my thought was if, if you wanted to put something together, Bill, you know, pick some, some, my, some simple minor things to add, like length and width and, you know, something like that, and maybe the, the verbiage that it could be, some criteria could be weighed by the planning board if, if necessary. And we can have it, have it at the public hearing and see how, if anybody, if the public has any comments. If there's no comments, then we can put it through. If there is, then we can look at re, re, you know, revisiting it, and if we need more time, we can just, we can just, uh, ask it to be postponed until next week.
Mm-hmm.
Not a hard thing.
I, I support that. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just before we leave this subject of bylaws, a couple of things. Going back to the first one, the marijuana facility. I didn't know if we were gonna have any discussion about that tonight before we actually have to have a public hearing about it, because my first question would be, what are neighboring towns doing as far as how late they're able to stay open? Because it seems to me like I remembered that was part of the selling point when they came for this special permit, was that they would be closing by eight o'clock.
The, the, at the, if you were at the Board of Selectments meeting, when they talked about this, they, they said that I believe Webster was open till nine.
Yeah.
And Oxford was open till ten. Or Charlton was open till ten. One of them was open till ten, and one of them was open till nine, both budding towns.
So I mean, I, personally, I'd be more open to nine o'clock than ten.
That's what they're asking for. They're asking for nine.
No, they're asking for ten, ten.
Was it ten?
They're asking for ten.
He asked for ten at the Selectments meeting?
And we thought it was nine. I thought he'd asked for nine at the Selectments.
He did ask for ten.
I think as they presented it, they were at a competitive disadvantage in terms of those, uh, competing businesses in the area, and they wanted some level of equality there.
The, the Board of Selectment thought it was an okay idea, so, I mean, we're, we're stuck with having, because it's, it's in the zoning bylaw, we're gonna have to hold the public hearing.
All right, then I'll bring up my argument for doing it to nine o'clock instead of ten o'clock at the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
All right, last thing was something that we had talked about a while back, but I know we needed to do a, uh, that would be an overlay, um. Bill, was there any, did any, did you hear anything else from that, um, business owner who was, um, trying to float the idea of a storage facility behind the, um, parking lot plaza?
The last I heard was, he was thinking of doing a, a more of a retail, uh, addition to that facility on the side, on the, facing it on the right-hand side.
Oh, so that would take up his access to get to the back?
Right.
All right, well, so much for that. Well, keep this in mind.
You know, nothing is, has been submitted, so I can't guarantee that, but that's his, he's thinking-
Well, I don't know. Should we be putting the idea out there to the Economic Development Committee that, you know, the board is, is open to suggestions for overlay districts for a couple of these businesses? I don't even know whether or not we're marketing the town properly as being a place where we could, we could use a storage facility if somebody wanted to come forward. And I'm wondering whether or not somebody had thought about it and just thought, oh, we can't do it, 'cause Dudley isn't even, Dudley doesn't even allow it in their zoning.
Oh, yeah.
It's before. We don't know how that happened. That's a magic storage facility.
Didn't specifically say no.
To Mr. Wetroba's point, I, I suspect that, you know, looking at the Stevens facility example, what a hundred fifty-six square apartments on, I don't know what provisions they're gonna have for storage within the building, but I suspect that some, some of those folks may have various items that they would like to find, storage locations for, uh, the seasonal toys, if you will, jet skis, things of that sort, that may not fit into whatever is available for them on site.
Even if, I'll give you another example. Even if after they finish the mill project, they decide that, say, down in the basements or somewhere, that they've got all of this extra square footage and they'd like to utilize that somehow, if they wanted to start to offer storage space to people that do not live in that building.
Yeah.
That would constitute exactly, you know, one of these storage facilities or pay that.
Well, that was, that was-
Currently, a current zoning wouldn't allow that.
That was something that we had talked about, putting it, putting it in the Mill Overlay District.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause we have plenty of, plenty of mills in the Overlay District, and we could do, do it at any of them.
But do we have to have a spawn, do we have to have a, what, what was the?
The location.
Property that we had to have? You remember with the, when we talked about the, uh, the farm, the small farm, having the marijuana cultivation?
All the mills would be included, 'cause they're already-
If you did the Mill Overlay District, then you'd have four or five.
All right, so can, can anybody think of a reason why we couldn't suggest that to be added to permissible uses for, in the Mill Overlay District right now?
We were talking about it last time.
Mm-hmm.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Good, yeah. I mean, did you wanna do it for the, for this, for this special, or?
Sure, why not?
Put it on our agenda and put it at the public hearing, and let's see what people have to say.
Okay.
I mean, it's a start. It's not gonna solve all the problems. It doesn't give you, uh, you know, it doesn't give you a hundred places in town where you can put them, but it gives you four or five.
Well, where it might make sense would be the Packard Mill, which, as you know, has been severely damaged with, you know, after the water.
Does anybody know what the, what, I think the auction ended on that? Does anybody know what that went for?
I asked, uh, Jim Keough. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, whether they had any luck with a new buyer.
Well, I thought it was auctioned.
It was supposed to been auctioned, yeah.
I don't think there was a minimum, so pretty sure somebody bought it.
Well, we don't know, but I'll, I was going to find out.
There's, there was also some land that went with the Stevens project, but I believe now, I think the town owns it. It was the old Thai house that's up off of Arlock Place. And I believe that property still falls under the Mill Overlay District, and I think it's just vacant now.
Yes. Does the town own that piece?
I think it is. They do.
Wait, what were you talking about?
Over behind, um, what is it, the key nine training place?
The dog training center, yeah.
Yeah, behind there, there's a road that goes up, and there's some land back there that used to be a Thai house.
That's the Thai Pond Dam, so the town has to retain that.
Well, there, there used to be a, there used to be a building back there that was, that was part of Stevens' linen mill, and it was torn down.
Yeah, 'cause, and that was actually, that was also part of the dam, literally. Like, one side of that building was the dam.
Okay, so that, that property could also be a, uh, it's part of the Mill Overlay District, so that property could be, uh-
Well, now that you mention it, there was also some property, I think, off of Flaxfield Road that was, that, that town ended up with, too. 'Cause I remember the Boy Scouts, at one point, they volunteered to go down there and clean it all up, so people could go down, go down to Lo Pond and fish.
All right.
Sounds like we're gonna have a full zoning slate.
Well, we'll see what passes muster of the public hearing.
We'll put it up for discussions.
Be extend the town meeting, uh, to another evening.
I don't know. Who's gonna come up and oppose a storage unit facility in a, an unused mill?
No, yeah, or a Mill Overlay District zone of land.
Right.
Okay, so, anything else on zoning amendments? Good? Okay, moving on to standard business. Discussion, status reports on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pear Pond Estates, Rocky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farm Estates, Line Estates. Do we have anything?
Well, I, as you know, uh, we have vitamin cost estimates for, um, Tobin Farm Estates and-
Misty Meadows.
And what?
Misty Meadows.
Misty Meadows. I have not heard back from the residents yet whether they wanna proceed with articles at town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so that's still up in the air.
Mm-hmm.
If they do, those would be on the warrant for town meeting.
Okay.
How is that communication being handled? Were they, were letters sent to the residents individually, or is it just the public notice?
Well, we had the public meeting in charge.
I know we had a public meeting, but how, how will they convey their wishes? Is it gonna be a reconvening of the public meeting for that to happen?
No, it's up to them to get back to us whether they wanna proceed. I assume they would.
See, I, I think, I think a lot of the people in, are under the impression that this is just going to be at, at, at the town meeting, that this vote is just gonna be there for them.
Okay.
You're telling me it's not?
I don't know. I don't know what, you know, the warrant is being put together by the town administrator, so I don't know what his proposal is at this point.
Okay.
Well, I mean, what would it harm to put it, put it on the warrant?
He wouldn't put it on if the residents were opposed to it. But if we don't hear from them, it might be on.
Right, it would be, I, I, I just thought it would be on, and, and then if it gets shot down at town meeting, it, it's, it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it needs to be on, for sure.
Right, and it, you know, perhaps it even be, it might possibly even be pulled before the meeting, depending on what the sentiment is. At least, I'm not sure. It seems to me there's some sort of a gap here in terms of how we're getting information back from the residents. And, uh, I don't know, is there's a spokesman? If there's some kind of a vote they're gonna take internally, is that, to decide this? Or how is that, what are the mechanics involved here? It doesn't sound like there's anything.
Well, I think the town, you know, has reached out to them.
Right, I understand. The town has reached out to them, and to some extent, the ball is in their court.
I think it is.
But how is that coming back in terms of what information?
There's no formal mechanism for it. They can-
If those articles are on the warrant, we would have to hold the public hearing for them, wouldn't we?
No.
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 The Board of Selectment would hold it?
Uh, no public hearing is required for a vitamin article.
No.
Okay.
Not part of the process.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when we had them in here and talked about it, it was more of like, we invited them just for an informational, I think that's what we called it, right? An informational meeting.
Yes.
We were informed that we were hated.
And I've not heard anything, uh, about Eisenhower Drive.
I have.
Oh, you have?
Yes, uh, I made a couple of phone calls to the developer. He's calling me back. Um, I did make, I made, made an additional phone call to the town administrator to explain to him what the, what, what his proposal was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I didn't get in touch with the town administrator, so I need to, I need to get in touch with the town administrator. Um, I don't think it's possible that it's gonna be on this town meeting, but he is, he is agreeable to work with us to get it completed and, um, get the required, uh, what was it?
Aspel.
Plan, yes. Yeah, he was, he was willing. He had, he was waiting to get, um, some information back from his engineer. Um, he called his engineer a few weeks in a row, finally got in touch with him, and so he does have some, he does have a plan. Um, I, my thought was I would propose it to the, his, what he would like to do to the town administrator to see if he's willing to accept this, these terms. If not, then we gotta go back and offer something else, or try to come to some other agreement.
Well, that's good progress.
Yeah.
Sounds like we finally have some movement on it.
Yeah, he called back, so that was, I thought it was good.
Right.
I commend the, the chair for having been able to get that communication.
Yeah. Sit down with all the five families? Sit down with all the five families, very good.
Well, it was six, I think.
Okay, so next thing on our agenda was the inspections and actions associated with site plans, so we've got legacy land in country club acres, LCP Solar, Oxford Ave, JD and D twenty-four, Oxford Ave, do we have anything with those?
No new information.
Okay, now about planners' plate?
Couple of things, um, on the town meeting warrant, we have a, a land donation proposed by Mr. Watkins, who inherited some property off of Baker Pond Road, it's landlocked, he's willing to donate it to the town, it's eighteen point seven-five acres. It's adjacent to two other town properties that were acquired through tax title process, the tax title process. I think, uh, we circulated it around among staff, and people are very supportive of accepting that land. There's a potential perhaps to, to get access off of Baker Pond Road through other means in the future. So while it's landlocked today, it could open up that area for future acquisitions, which might make a, a nice open space parcel up in that area. So I think, um, the planning board doesn't need to do anything, doesn't need to take a position on it, but just wanted to let you know that that is coming up. We have the.
Revised.
Zoning map from CMRPC, includes the business fifteen overlay district on Route one thirty-one, and the, um, changed the act for protection overlay district. So, um, they had asked whether they could use an hour of LPA time, I spoke with Guy and he authorized the use, so we've used one hour of LPA time for that purpose, which I think is time well spent.
I think we should thank Mr. Clark, cause I'm sure that hour was one of the hours that he earned for us.
Some of the information out of the meetings is fairly interesting.
So that sort of leaves open the question of what to do with the other LPA time that we have. I don't know whether you have any thoughts, you wanna think about it, but we might as well come up with some, some use for it. Last year, you may remember, we put it towards the open space and recreation plan, which helped to lower the town's cost for that, that plan.
What are, what are we, what are we up to for hours right now?
I don't know, it's, you start with twelve, and then you get an hour for each time someone attends a meeting. So Richard, you've probably been to a couple, last year we had twenty-four, which is the maximum you can get, so.
Okay.
I don't think I've missed that, at least not recently anyways.
So it could be eighteen to twenty, something of that magnitude.
Um, are we gonna need any help when it comes to the, um, uh, fu- future submissions for the, like the sidewalk grants or the.
Possibly.
Complete streets, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
For grant application purposes?
Yeah. Maybe we could have them, if, if we have enough hours, we could have them look at the next one. Um, I gotta say, I took a, I had the opportunity to drive down Mason Road twice in the last week, and I was amazed at how many people were on the sidewalk walking their dogs, and everybody was looking like, everybody had smiles on their faces, and I saw multiple groups of people walking up and down Mason Road, so I'm guessing that they kinda like it.
Right.
So they're probably thinking, how fast can we get to the end of Mason Road?
I, I love the fact that we repaved Dudley Oxford Road and Mason Road, but I know that in the past, residents on Mason Road in particular, and someone on Dudley Oxford Road noted the fact, noted that speed limits are somewhat optional. Uh, I'm afraid that beautiful asphalt surface is only gonna encourage even more of that optional speed limit.
Well, yes and no, we talked about this in previously where someone from the CMRPC, I think, was the one who brought it to our attention that narrowing the roadway actually helps slow traffic down, so down that end where the sidewalks are in, it's actually slowed down. Where you've got a bigger problem is where the sidewalks don't exist right now, and this afternoon, as a matter of fact, I noticed that the Dudley Police Department has put one of those automatic signs right at the, almost like at the top of Sawmill Road, right, right about there. So when you're coming down that straightaway from like June Street coming back this way.
Twenty-five miles on.
Yeah, yeah, and it's kinda straight there, so people tend to put the pedal down.
I don't think that the, the perception is that the roadway has narrowed that much, actually. I don't perceive it as having narrowed a heck of a lot, frankly, but.
Well, you drive very sanely, Mr. Clark.
I'm wearing a seatbelt too, I might add, thank you for the clarification.
Should I let it perhaps?
Oh, oh, that's optional, yeah.
I just, I just noticed that, I, you know, I, I noticed it driving up, and when I came back, I was about an hour and a half later, and there was just as many people, it was getting, starting to get dark, and it was just as many people out walking on the new sidewalks.
Now, that's excellent.
As there was in, in the earlier hours.
If you build.
Just to true, an interesting thought, well, maybe not interesting, but we've got Jesse Road, where's that situation going? Uh, we gave them a year's extension, as I recall, but that's where the meter's been running on that for a while.
I know, it's to say, oh, I don't think anybody decided to buy it, I think.
Last time I checked, the listing had expired.
Because the part of the, the sweetener was it was gonna have to be a sidewalk on Jesse Road.
It's a covenant, so it stays there, right? Doesn't matter, although, actually, no, you gave them your extension, if they don't come back.
Yeah.
Definitely throw it again.
Everything starts all over again.
I think the time's gonna run out on that one.
It's, it's like it might, I don't know exactly what the end date is, but it's coming, it's, we're getting closer, obviously. All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Planner, I think we cut you off.
No, that was it for me.
Okay, next item on our agenda, comments from the planning board?
I think we said enough.
Well put, Mr. Wetrova, well.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna need any comments from the audience, so our next business, set the next meeting date, is it gonna be on September twenty-eighth at seven PM here in this room? Uh, approval of consultant vouchers, payments of bills, do we have any of that at this time? No, at this time, other town notices, nothing? Other town notices?
Um, no, not that I can think of.
And other correspondence, nothing else?
Mr. Chairman, if it's in order, I would make a motion that we adjourn at this point.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can you hear this, thank you everyone, have a good night.